Sarah's here, she's in the bathroom. We'll take the edge out, it would make the discussion a lot easier.
Whatever, okay. So we're going to call the meeting to order and this is the Monday, June 24th, 2024 Montgomery County Board of Supervisors meeting. And our first item of business is to go into closed session. And be it resolved, the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby enters into closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following. Section 2.2-3711. Number one, discussion, consideration or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, discipline or resignation of specific officers, appointees or employees of any public body. And that would be the Montgomery Floyd Regional Library Board. Do I have such a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call please.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Switjikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Mots?
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky?
Aye.
Chair Biggs?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, we're now in closed session.
Okey dokey, we are back and we need a motion to come out of closed meeting. Is there such a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, roll call please.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Ms. Demots?
Aye.
Mr. Grafski?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Chair Biggs?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, and then we're gonna have a motion to certify our closed meeting, and that will read, "Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and where Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveying the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board." Do I have such a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, roll call please.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Ms. Demots?
Aye.
Mr. Grafski?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Chair Biggs?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, our next item is our moment of silence and our pledge of allegiance led by Ms. Hill, our county administrator.
Please rise for a moment of silence, and then I will lead us in the pledge. Let us pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
I'd like to make an amendment to our work session.
And what would that amendment be?
Uh, I would like to expand, um, the, I would like a, uh, work session about expanding the hearing that we will have on July 8th about, um, satellite voting stations, expanding it from just Blacksburg to potentially Shawsville and Reiner.
Okay, so you'd like to add that just to the work session to, um, sort of get information and, um...
Have some discussion.
Yeah, okay, is there a...
Potentially have the hearing on July 8th expanded.
Okay, all right, is there a second for that? Okay, hearing, no second, I guess that's dropped. Um, what I will say is that if you want to do anything differently, it would have to be placed someplace in the agenda if you wanted to, um, look at expanding anything, so is, is there anyone that wants to add that to the agenda anywhere?
I would like to add it to the agenda.
Okay, where would you like to add it underneath, um...
Ms. Hill, do you have any advice on where that would be?
Exactly, what are you proposing to add?
The, the expanded version of the hearing.
Oh, if we, if we change the public hearing, we need to, um, advertise again, and so if we have a different public hearing, it would have to be on July 22nd in order for that to be advertised appropriately and get public notice.
Is that enough time, Marty?
Yeah, yeah, it's enough time. I mean, currently the ordinance that's proposed, that's been advertised for July 8th, only lists Blacksburg Community Center as a satellite in the ordinance, so if you wanna, if you wanna expand that or have the board consider expansion, then we have to, in essence, redo the ordinance, so re-advertise, add the other facilities, um, and then, uh, the new public hearing couldn't be the 8th, we couldn't meet the advertising, so we'd be at the 22nd of July.
So would that be under new business?
Yes, that would be under news business.
I would like to add that to new business.
Okay, um, is there a second to the, um, motion to add that under new business?
For discussion about it.
We'd actually have to act on it if we...
That's correct, if it's in new business, it would be an action item that could be discussed before you took a vote.
Yeah, okay, is there a second for that? Okay, so that motion dies, okay, so basically that ends any discussion of expanding, um, a satellite, uh, position other than Blacksburg, just so we're clear on that, because the timeline to do so would be today. Okay, all right, well, that takes us down to our public address, and let me read the guidelines for that. Um, "This is the time the Board of Supervisors welcomes citizens to present comments on issues related to the county, and a sign-up sheet was available before the meeting for citizens to sign up to speak, and following the speakers have signed up, members from the audience, of course, may address the Board. All comments must be directed to the chair and the Board from the speaker's podium at the front of the room. It's our time to listen, and the Board does not reply to questions during this time. Please state your name and where you reside. When you come to the podium, you have four minutes to speak, either as an individual or as a representative, and after three minutes, you will see a yellow reminder light to, that will appear on the box on the podium. At four minutes, a red light will signal that your time is up. Speakers may leave any written statements and/or information for the Board with the Board Clerk. Speakers will be ju- judged out of order should they engage in personal attacks, use profanity, or abusive language, or debate with the audience. During public address, we ask the audience to please be respectful of the speaker's time by not applauding, commenting, or interrupting." And I believe we have, um, Mr. Pack signed up, so the floor is yours, welcome.
Good evening, Board, my name is Wayman Pack, and I reside on Piney Woods Road in Reiner. One of the greatest things that we have been gifted is time, time to eat, time to spend with our loved ones, time to sleep, and time to enjoy what free time we may have. Why would anyone want to spend this precious commodity riding a bus for over two hours to spend a few minutes casting a vote in the election when recent changes to our laws have made it entirely unnecessary? Personally, I feel that the ten minutes it would take me to drive to my designated polling place to cast my vote is time wasted. Does this mean that I am against voting or do not plan to vote? Absolutely not. I was brought up to believe that if you do not take advantage of your hard-earned right to vote, then you have no right to complain about the outcome of an election. The fact is, I feel that my time can be better spent. For the past few years, absentee voting has become more mainstream. Even persons who have spoken most adamantly against it in the past have been found to use this service themselves. There are still some who continue to speak out against it, but their numbers are fewer now than in the past. Anyone in our county can request an absentee ballot, a neighbor can even pick up an application for a friend, and it can also be requested online if they have access to a computer. Then, for the grand sum of sixty-eight cents to purchase one first-class United States postage stamp, they can return their request by mail. They can even request to become permanent absentee voters if they so desire, as my wife and I have done, and never again need to worry about traffic, being late to work because of early long lines at a polling station, or not being able to vote after work because of needing to stay late. As was presented at the last meeting by our county registrar, the members of the electoral board who have been selected for overseeing our elections have stated that the current facility in use by the registrar's office has sufficient space and staffing to accommodate the anticipated voter turnout. The, these general duties of the board include the preparation of ballots, administration of absentee ballot provisions, conduct of the elections, and ascertaintment of results of the elections. Let them do their jobs without your interference. As a member of this board stated during the last meeting, if transportation is a problem, absentee ballots are available upon request. I would like to add, use them for their convenience, use them for less stress about getting to and from the polls, and use them to reduce traffic and help our environment. According to our registrar, there are currently twenty-nine voting precincts in the county plus the central absentee precinct for a total of thirty. Opening another place to vote calls for additional security as ballots are retrieved at the end of each day. This gives people who are easily deceived a reason to say that someone tampered with the ballots if the election does not go their way. These may be the same people who may not trust the United States Postal Service to deliver their ballot, even though they may trust it to deliver their income tax returns. To those people, I say your absentee ballot is mailed to you using this organization early enough that you have ample to complete it. Stop by the registrar's office when you happen to be near the office, drop it in a secure lockbox just inside the door. I know that this can be done because I've done it. The nine thousand dollar cost quoted by the registrar for this two-week polling location can be better used elsewhere.
Thank you, Mr. Pack. Would anyone else like to come forward at this time? All right, seeing no others, we'll close the public address. Ms. Hill, do we have an addendum tonight?
No addendum tonight.
Okay, so our next item of it since is to go into work session, and we're gonna be talking, um, about our legislative priorities, and is there anything else?
That's all.
I think that's it. Okay, so do we have a motion to do so?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Ms. Demots?
Aye.
Mr. Grafski?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Biggs?
Aye, seven ayes.
Okay, so we are now ready to discuss. Do you all wanna say anything first, or...
Yes, I have a few comments, a few updates.
Okay.
Vicky and the staff went through the legislative priorities that you have in your board docs, and, um, I have some comments for you before we get started that are resulting from the legislation, legislative action this past General Assembly. Also, we've gotten a couple that we, um, have already heard from you that you want to potentially add, so I'm just gonna go in the order that they're listed on the list.
Okay.
The first item is under funding, it's the last item under funding that would be a new addition. Supervisor Bone had requested, uh, sometime after the last legislative priorities were adopted, that we consider, uh, an addition to support fully funding DEQ in order to make sure that they have the resources that they need to appropriately enforce their, um, requirements. So that's one thing that has come up that we might add. Then, under land use, uh, we would propose that there would be an addition that says solar and energy facilities for local regulation, that there would be opposition to any legislation that prohibits local regulation for solar and energy facilities. If you remember, in January of this past year, the Board, uh, sent a letter in opposition to the General Assembly about Senate Bill 697 that was gonna have that type of effect. And then the next item would be right after that, that is also resulting from a letter that the Board had sent to the General Assembly. It says citing of energy facilities oppose approval by State Corporation Commission and opposed legislation that prohibits local regis- local regulation. That's in response to Senate Bill 567 and House Bill 636 that would, um, allow the State Corporation Commission to, if they approved citing, I'm just gonna read that instead of trying to paraphrase it, that might be easier.
Yeah, that's good.
Easier. Um, it said establishes a procedure under which an electric utility or independent power provider, the applicant, is able to obtain approval for a certificate from the State Corporation Commission for the citing of an energy facility rather than from governing body of a locality. And the next part of that said that the bill provides that an applicant who's issued a certificate by the commission for an energy facility, facility is exempt from obtaining approvals or permits, including any land use approvals or permits under the regulation and ordinances of the locality. And so I think it was the position of the Board at the time that that was something that we were in opposition to because it does limit what the locality can do.
Yeah, in essence, it preempts the locality, which means you'd be completely out of the process.
Can you reread the sentence about prohibits, uh, applications for land use or zoning, or there was a sentence in there about...
It says, "The bill provides that an applicant who has issued a certificate by the commission for an energy facility is exempt from obtaining approvals or permits, including any land use approvals or permits under the regulations and ordinances of the locality."
Thanks.
Uh-huh. That, um, legislation was continued to the 2025 Labor and Commerce Committee. Then, under Law Enforcement Line of Duty Act supporting the amendment to the code to afford private police officers the benefits available under the Line of Duty Act, that would, the subcommittee did not recommend reporting on that, um, so that's just an update about that item. And then the item right after that on your list, which eliminates animal license tax for retired canine dogs, was approved, I think Marty might bring that board, that we need to approve an ordinance for that as well.
Yeah, so if the Board wants to give consensus, we can start the process of getting that ordinance, um, um, to get the necessary approvals. It wouldn't, it couldn't come into effect until July 1st anyway, but, yeah.
And then, um...
All right.
The last change was the item right after that. Public safety telecommunications, E911 dispatchers, uh, providing VRS benefits for 911 dispatchers was continued to the 2025 Appropriations Committee, so that's the last update and the only other items that we had that you might want to add, but if you have other items that you want to add or anything you want to take off or changes, we can, uh, compile those into a draft and bring them back to you.
Okay, so we basically need to, to see first of all how everyone feels about what you've just said, and then if, if anyone wants to add anything. So, um, let's go down. Um, Supervisor Bone, you know the one on the DEQ, this is just, um, a question, do you mean state funding?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, do we need to make that?
We can clarify that.
Okay, okay, um, well, let's start with Supervisor Bone. Um, what do you think about what's been brought up so far? Are you okay with it?
Yes.
Okay, um, Supervisor Kits?
And I don't know how we word this, and I, I read through it and I forgot about it, but I'd brought it up before, about the categorization of broadband as utility. I know we have to push our legislators to be able to do that, I know the ISPs had stepped in and kind of pushed back, but I'd like to add that in, that we categorize that as a utility, because that changes the way it's put into code and how it's built in, and that broadband should be, it's as necessary as everything else and should be treated as a utility.
Okay, we, we can get some language put together for you.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, and Supervisor King?
Yeah, uh, got one thing I'd like to add to it, if I wanna have a discussion on it, uh, but I don't know where we had added it. I'd like to see us ask Richmond if we could start giving our animal control officers, uh, LEOs or extend their retirement as law enforcement.
Hazardous duty?
Hazard, yeah, hazard duty. I mean, I don't know how the rest of you feel.
Recategorize them as, as, yeah.
Yeah, so basically the same thing as...
What we do with the 911 and the...
With the dispatchers.
Yeah.
Well, I like to do it separate, though, because they do actually carry guns and...
Yeah.
Then 911.
Okay.
I mean, I'm still for 911 to get it, but I won't, I like for this to be separate because you may have people that would vote for that, but not for the...
Okay, um, does anyone feel strongly about not putting that on, is it okay to add it? Everybody okay? All right?
Thank you.
All right, and let's go over to Supervisor Grafski. Do you have anything that you wanna add, or that you're, and this didn't the last time that we can...
Right.
Can work on it, but just sort of getting in the beginning phases.
I don't know if it's add or, you know, but with, with the recent developments with passenger rail, do we need to modify that language to be a little more, you know, knowing that, like, it's, it's gonna be coming, is, do we change that language a little more, whether it's around lo- location, you know, be more specific with location, or, um...
Oh, I see what you're saying.
You know, 'cause it's not, it's not, I mean, it's gonna extend, it's gonna come here, right, and so I, I don't know if we, if there's anything to push harder.
Yeah.
In other words, like, um, where it says to... In other words, like, where it says to the New River Valley, are you thinking of making that more specific or?
Or how we would support it?
Yeah, 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 because it's less about getting the funding for it. Now it's more about supporting, you know, ridership and development of that site and things.
I think it is appropriate as, as that's moved forward and we have more direction to add more specificity to that because we didn't really know exactly what support we needed then to provide previously, but I think that's a good addition.
Is everybody okay with that?
You may want to add the latest date that they gave us, too.
Yeah, add a date.
2026.
Okay, everybody okay with that? All right. Supervisor Demots?
I have a couple of items. In legislative priorities under education, first in the first bullet, second paragraph, based on the recent J-Lark study, can we remove the recent and enter the year of the study? I think it was the 2023 J-Lark study, just so it's more specific.
Yes.
And then, in land use, the two items that you discussed, Angie, opposition to any legislation that regulates local control of solar facilities and the energy facility citing, I'm wondering if we could take that, so our headline item is preserve land use authority at the local level and support opportunity, dah dah dah. I'm wondering if we could have a separate list level that, because they're the same.
Right.
They're both preserve local land use authority, and these are the two test cases.
Right, yeah.
So I'm wondering if, instead of having three separate priority items, we have the one priority item with both of those items as a change list level below.
Right.
Just formatting. Do we, because it failed, do we remove, and I don't have a feeling about this one way or another, it's just a question, on Law Enforcement Line of Duty Act, because that failed in the last General Assembly, do we remove that from our legislative priorities or do we keep it on as a priority of this board?
I would keep it.
Okay.
It could come back up.
Yeah, I'm hearing, I'm hearing I keep it, so that was just, that was just a question. And then, an idea for presentation to legislators, and I'm, this is a very grand scale idea, and I'm saying it now because it would take time to implement. So some of our colleagues have like a little, perfect little card that fits right here or they've got little folding things, and one of our problems has historically been that our list is quite long. And I'm wondering if we could leverage QR codes within the material to, and I know that takes like building out separate areas on the website, but if we, say we, one of our priorities is Valley to Valley Trail, that's the priority item, that's the bullet point in the small item with a QR code that links then to all of our information about Valley to Valley Trail, just so it's a better resource for our legislators.
We've talked about that a little bit because that, the format of that is easier, I think, for people to handle and keep up with, and it would be a little bit cleaner than our more lengthy list. So we could, we can definitely get some of that for you.
And I think we've, we've crossed the threshold where the majority of people, regardless of age and our legislators and all of that, are going to have a cell phone with the ability and probably are quite familiar with using a QR code for like a menu at a restaurant or, and so I think it's, it's, it's a technology that's pretty roundly embraced. I could be wrong on that, but.
I think so.
I just think, think about ways that we can make it more of a resource for them. So if Delegate Ballard, for example, wants, I need to, what is this Valley to Valley Trail? Oh, I've got a link to it right here on their priority list that gives all the information about it. So I'm just thinking of ways so it can be more useful.
It's a great idea.
That's all. I don't have anything to add besides those comments.
All right, has that brought to mind anything for anyone else? Supervisor Kits or?
Yeah, I'll let Anthony, Supervisor Grafsky go, and then I've got to follow up on something.
Okay. You're okay, he's okay.
Okay.
Where'd he went?
I wasn't prepared for that. You're trying to buy time.
I'm going to get to you. You and I are last.
So it reminded me, I remember we were talking when we went last time for legislative session, that there were certain counties that had requested reimbursement for responding to accidents on 81. I'd like to be able to push that this time so we can bring it to the forefront. I know Pulaski County had done it. I'd like to be able to do it that way we have a better source of revenue to be able to support fire and rescue. And there's another one that I'm, that remind me of, and I, and the departments are going to kick me for this one because I can't remember the wording, and Todd, you're going to have to help me. It's where the state had a problem with the funding of EMS and, and it was, something was done at the state level and they nixed all funding coming back, and I can't remember the technical term off the top of my head. And we need to push them on that again because we need to get that reinstated because they stopped it. You're off, you're off.
That's the funding they had for supposing.
And I'd like to see that because as we begin to push forward with fire and EMS, we need to make sure that we have the funding that's available for us, and I think that needs to be reinstated. It's, the state nixed it because it was mismanaged.
Right.
At the state level, and I'd like to be able to push that to get that, to bring it up in our legislative priorities that we need to be, get that funding. But, but the reimbursement of responding to accidents on 81, I think is a big one. I know Pulaski County pushed it forward with Senator Hackworth last time. I'd like to be able to jump into that, too, please.
Okay, everybody okay with those? Okay. Okay, Supervisor Bone, and then we're going to Vice Chair Fidzikowski.
With regard to Supervisor Kits and Demots, would it be possible for us to get the legislative priorities of the counties and cities around us?
Yes.
So that if we want to piggyback on anything or they've got great ideas, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay, and Vice Chair Fidzikowski?
Yeah, I don't have anything to add, but I was maybe going to try to get some clarification from Supervisor Kits. The first one is pushing to make broadband a utility. The way you, the way you described it, it sounded like that makes sense to do that, but do you have any idea of what the ramifications would be for the industry if that were to happen?
It was brought up during the last legislative session that the internet service providers pushed back on this because they get to charge, and then somebody can correct me if I'm wrong and they'll probably hit me up later by the foot on how they put it in. And this would change some of the formulation for that because as a utility, it's mandated. And that's like, we were dealing with, I think it was a development in your district, and now we're trying to push internet towards there, but it wasn't built with that in mind in the first place where it was laid in, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong on this.
Okay.
But if we had done it ahead of time and required it as a, as a part of code, as a utility, then it would have had to been laid at the same time as the, as the rest of stuff. And like, the builder that came in that was building over in, near Walnut Creek, he said it would be irresponsible of a builder not to put it in, but I think it's one of those things that if we, we, we can't do it from what I understand until the state legislates it correctly, but I'd like to be able to push them so we can at least see where we're at because if everybody required to have it, Nelson County did a study, and the number one place they were getting internet was for their students, was in a McDonald's parking lot at seven o'clock in the morning. It's a utility. It's necessary, it's needed, and I think if we can push forward, then, right now, the ISPs pushed back this last time so it didn't get passed through. I don't know what the financial ramifications are, but if it's something that's necessary to function in today's society, I think it would be irresponsible not to push it forward and push our legislators to put it as a, as a utility.
Yeah, I'd be interested in hearing more about that and how they would go about that because you're right, that's the time to do it, and I think that's been brought up here before. We've talked about it, so.
Can I add just one comment to that, too? In the same vein, one of the pushback reasons or one of the fears is FCC regulation for things like blackouts, backup, and some of the ISPs don't necessarily want FCC regulation the way the other utilities are regulated. And so if there's, you know, say there's a service outage, then the FCC regulations would mean they have X amount of time to restore this as a communication with customers, and so I think that's part of the pushback as well.
Yeah. I figured it had to, had to do with money, so it does. And the other item was about funding for EMS and fire on the interstate. So you're saying the, the one we have under transportation, which is support funding to localities to help offset public safety operations, that should be fine tuned? Is that what you're asking for?
Yes, and I, and I'd like to jump on with what Supervisor, Supervisor Bone said, is that, we talked to Pulaski County Reg, uh, legisla, ah, the board in Pulaski County, and they were pushing it forward last time. I'm not sure how far it went, I think it went through, but if we had done a bunch of us together to fine tune it down, that these are responding to accidents on 81 and how it's pulling our departments out, I just, a little language, maybe a little verbiage.
Do you know how they, they worded theirs?
I have no idea. I'm going to look at the.
Well, you can ask.
But I, it was something that was actually mentioned offhand in a conversation. I was like, wow, that's a great idea.
And then collecting data on our end, so we've got the, the legs under the request.
Because there's certain requests that the departments do already for certain things, but I would like to be able to maximize the amount because of, as much time as we spend out there, especially Christiansburg in particular, which falls into mine in your district, I think that's, that would be a big offset for them and be a big help. Because now, right now, it's an insurance thing, it's if. It's not a definite thing, it's an if. So I just want to codify that a little bit so we can get in there and just kind of nail it down.
Yeah, I would agree on that.
Okay, everybody okay with those? Do you, you don't have anything else? Okay, does anyone else have anything else? Okay.
One last, one last thing.
Yeah, okay, go ahead.
Maybe it should be broadened to any interstate. It might get more traction.
Okay, that's good. Of course, my big thing is the J-Lark. I wish we could put it in bold capital letters, that first whole sentence. My other thing is going back to the interstate. I brought this up a number of times to legislators, and this has been discussed by some of the other counties in VACO that follow the interstate, you know, 81. And I can tell you, you know, coming back from Richmond yesterday, that terrible accident on the northbound lane, Botta Top, everything was out there, their fire department, their ambulance, I mean, it had a whole crew of people out there, and so it does go up and down the interstate. And there should be some kind, in my opinion, some kind of reimbursement, some kind of something going on. So I'm glad you brought that up. Yeah, yeah, it does. Mm-hmm, it was a mess, so, all right, well, that sounds good. So like I said, this is just the beginning, so if we think of other things or if we see something from VACO or something like that that we might need to add, we can still do that. Does staff have enough direction with all of that?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, is there anything else that you want to talk about under legislative priorities at this point?
Quick question. With that, what he was talking about making a utility, would they be able to regulate the price of what they, what they charge like you do electric?
Yeah, if it became a quote, "public utility," then the SEC would be regulating.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Anything else? All right, we'll entertain a motion to come out of work session.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
And roll call, please.
Ms. Demots?
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky?
Aye.
Ms. Spohn?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Chair Biggs?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, that leads us to our items of consent.
Make a motion to accept our items of consent.
Is there a second?
Second.
Um, is there any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Grafsky?
Aye.
Ms. Spohn?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Ms. Demots?
Aye.
Chair Biggs?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All right, that takes us to our new business, and we have, our first one is ordinance amending Chapter Six Motor Vehicles and Traffic Video Monitoring System in or on school buses. Passing a stop school bus.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Just clarifying, this is, this is adding a video monitoring system. When the stop sign is deployed, it's not adding video monitoring inside of the buses.
Right.
Okay.
It's to get the people that are going past the sign, okay?
They will be on the school buses, right? Yeah.
Yep, you got it. All right, roll call, please.
Ms. Spohn?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Ms. Demots?
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky?
Aye.
Chair Biggs?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, our second item is a resolution to approve the county's participation in the proposed settlement, opiate-related claims against Kroger and its related corporate entities. Marty, do you want to say anything about that or?
I could just mention briefly, what's happened is there's been a national settlement dealing with Kroger and, and its issuing of opiates through, through their pharmacies. And so, and then what's happened since then is that there's been a sufficient amount of state attorney generals who have likewise approved the national settlement, including Virginia has approved it. And so now we're at the local level, and our outside counsel who represents over 40 public entities, including us, has, has recommended that we approve the settlement, and it's over a billion dollars nationally, about 28 million has come into Virginia. Our amount will be based on the same methods that we've done the other settlements, mainly we have an MOU with all the localities and the Commonwealth based on, on effects of opiates in our county and then the other counties, and based on that formula, then we get our share of that money. It's going to be paid over about 11 years, so.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Yes.
Question for Marty. With that, and I guess this is, you might not know the answer, this might be more for you, procedurally, any additional funds would go into the NRV recovery ecosystem?
Well, no, all the additional money would then go to, it goes into different pots. We get 30% directly to us, another 50 goes to the authority that then is, is, that localities can work together to seek grants like the one you're mentioning. And so that money then, so any direct money that we're getting will have to be, the board would have to agree to, yeah.
Okay, that's kind of more.
We don't have any money, yeah.
Is there a future decision for us?
Sure, yes.
Related to this additional, or is it just rolled in?
No, it's not rolled in.
Right, it may be added as a match to the, to the New River Ecosystem Recovery Program, but it doesn't have to be.
Right, but the board would have to approve that.
That's correct.
But the money is, has to be used for opiate abatement. You can't use it for any other reason, right?
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, comments?
Could, could we get some kind of update about the other money, you know, how it's been spent and?
Sure, yeah, we can give you that.
Thank you.
That would be good to know. Anything else? Ready to vote? All right, roll call.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Ms. Demots?
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky?
Aye.
Ms. Spohn?
Aye.
Chair Biggs?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
That leads us to reports, so county attorney report.
I have nothing further, Madam Chair.
Okay, county administrator report.
I just have a few quick things. The mobilization and work on the Blacksburg Outdoor Library Project, it, the project is an outdoor project, the library is not an outdoor library. It started today. That was awkwardly placed adjective, I think. And then I emailed you late this afternoon a schedule of the Auburn Park construction. If you have any questions about that, you can let us know.[1764.16] And then I wanted to share with you an exciting and pretty cool story about a softball tournament that was held at Creed Fields this past weekend. It was from June twentieth through the twenty-third. And, um, it's the first time that we've hosted a tournament at Creed Fields. They played under the lights. They had to rearrange some, uh, schedules and some times because it was so hot. But it was very, very well attended. And there were two age groups, U-ten or ten U. and twelve U., eight teams from throughout the New River, New River Valley. And I just wanna give a huge shout-out to the Parks and Rec Department. A lot of people worked really hard. Um, the athletic staff did, the maintenance. Josh is applauding back there, but he helped. Um, he took some photos and Becky also, um, MPI, took some drone footage that, um, we can share with you. But it was just, and Mitchell Hawk, of course, led his team to do that. It was just really exciting and I think it's good to see those fields put to such a great use and that we could do that in our community. So, hats off to them. That's all I have.
Did you wanna say anything about?
Yes, uh, the comprehensive plan. We had the, um, meeting last Monday, a joint meeting between the Board of Supervisors and the Planning Commission. And they reviewed the, the Planning Department staff, did a really great job with that as well. And, um, they reviewed the transportation plan and the status of that and also the comprehensive plan, work that's being done on that. And there's a survey out now if folks would like to, um, fill that out about what kinda growth they think that the county needs to see. That would be very, very, very helpful. We hope we get a lot of response to that. And our PIO office helped with that as well, with the branding for that. So, we're doing great things, I think.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's go to board member reports. And Supervisor Ben, do you have a report tonight?
No report.
Okay. And Supervisor Kitsch?
So, uh, I've had a chance to, uh, sit down with a couple of the fire and EMS, specifically Reiner, uh, to get some feedback from those guys and, uh, to see how we're doing and how we can support them. Um, as a lot of people know, as we begin to move forward towards Ellison and Shawsville and, uh, the problem of day calls there and we begin to expand, there's a lot of rumors flying around and myself and Michael Geary are trying to go around and sit down with each department. Uh, we're gonna be down in Ellison on July ninth to sit down and, and talk with all the volunteers down there. Um, volunteers are important. They're the heart of our, our departments. And without them, we, we're not gonna be successful. And I think we, they need to know that they, we've got their back and that we have the ability to make sure that we're funded properly, that we are able to carry this mission forward. And that's why I'm going down to Ellison. I'll be going to all the county departments, not so much the towns, but the county specific over the next month or so. Telling everybody, here I come. Um, and to talk to them, get their concerns. Um, because they're gonna be, have a seat at the table. They need to be able to, to have input. I'm a little worried as we move forward, as we go down towards Shawsville and Ellison, I wanna make sure that they know that they're appreciated. Because we're only trying to do day. We don't wanna do a full department. If we had to do a full department, I think, and we've talked about this a little bit here and there, how much it would affect the overall county and the budget. And we need to make sure that we keep the heart of the communities, which are a lot of our volunteer departments. Need to make sure we keep them. They need to know that they're appreciated. And, uh, I think, as I, you know, this report is specifically towards that because it's taken up a lot of my time because it's important. It's important for the county. It's important for our communities. And they need to know that they're supported. So, for Ellison and Shawsville, I'm coming down there July ninth. Please feel free to come. I wanna be able to talk to all the volunteers so we can have the opportunity to relay any fears that may be out there. We wanna make sure that that department's maintained and maintained at a high level. I've heard some things that have been a little discouraging, that the possibility that it, it could go sideways. And I'm hoping it doesn't and I'm hoping me coming down there with Michael will let them know how much we care and how much we wanna support them because the implications, if it's not, is going to be a very, you know, significant emotional event across the entire county. Because no matter what, we have to come down there and we have to support it. So, that's the big part of my report. I talked to some of y'all offline about this and, and you know what the ramifications of this are. So, I'm coming July ninth to the Ellison Fire Department. I'm coming down there. So, just making sure everybody knows. Thank you.
Well, I would just say on behalf of the board that we really appreciate Supervisor Kitsch's the time and commitment that you've put into this and the investment. It is a great deal of your, of your time and we, it's definitely appreciated. So, with that being said, Supervisor King?
I don't have no report, but I have talked to, me and Supervisor Kit talks on a regular basis and I tell him all the time, I appreciate him and a lot of volunteers do too.
Good, good, good. All right. Supervisor Demonts?
Angie, you stole my thunder. You really did.
Well, you can pile on to my thun-, to your thing.
Um, I, I really, um, was really pleased to receive the update from Ashley in our Parks and Rec Department on how great things went this weekend. Um, and, and just the cooperation with the Parks and Rec staff, the maintenance team, public information, um, you know, we built Creed Fields with the hopes that we would be able to host tournaments. And it's super exciting that that is coming to fruition and we're actually doing that. So, in a similar vein, uh, related to the Auburn Park project, um, the schedule that you sent is awesome. Thank you for that. I do have a follow-up question. Um, I know there's a time lapse between planting grass and playable fields. And so, any more details about, I know we say the project will be complete in January. Does that mean complete and the fields are ready or?
Scott and I talked about that just this afternoon. It depends on the weather. It depends on the growing season.
You can't predict the weather or the growing season?
Can't predict the weather. We're gonna.
Shocking.
The plan is to get the, uh, fields completed first. So, hopefully, but I cannot promise that grass will be grown on, at the end of January. But maybe we'll have a great spring growing season. I don't know.
I just, uh, and I asked that question because really, so your answer would, would be that because we don't know that grass growth is unpredictable. And so, we can have all of the best intentions in the world and not be able to get the grass grown and have beautiful fields with no grass and we can't play on them. And so, my, and I know Supervisor King shares this with me, my great hope is that we have spring sports on fields in Auburn. Um, that would be amazing. That would be a huge victory for Montgomery County.
I share that great hope, which as Supervisor Kitsch pointed out, is a four-letter word. But I still share the hope and, and I really do hope they can play on those fields. If they can't, the playgrounds will be there. There'll be, um, picnic shelters. People can have.
Walking trails.
Walking trails. So, there will be some things people can do. I really, really hope they can play on the fields.
Great. Excited, very excited. That's all.
I, I will tell you one thing about the Reiner Park. They are digging out there. And I talked to one of the gentlemen that's operating machine out there. And I said, well, y'all, y'all is starting out pretty good here, y'all. I said, well, I hope y'all hurry up 'cause we got a first ballgame scheduled for July the first. It'll be ready next year, July. I said, no, next month. That's all I'm gonna tell you he said.
But I, I would also add that we had the same panic down in, in, um, Ellison over that park. And of course, w- we really had some bad weather for that park to get started. I mean, they had to fight a lot of things. But I remember, uh, Mitchell Hawk telling me, he says, I know you're probably looking at that football field and it's all brown. He goes, but that's the type of grass it is. And sure enough, it came back quick. Um, bec-, it, 'cause it's supposed to do that every year, I guess. But, um, yeah, I was a little worried about that myself. But you just talk to Mitchell. He'll, he'll, he'll make it happen. Yeah.
Okay. And Supervisor Grasky?
Uh, I just wanna recognize our local extension office. Um, so this morning, this is the first time I've had the boys out of bed before about ten o'clock since school got out, but we dropped them off at the mall to go to 4H camp. And, you know, it's, I mean, probably hundreds of kids just from Montgomery County. And then there's multiple localities that are going down there together this week. And so, it was just a really well-organized, uh, event. And, you know, everybody was excited and it was fun to see a lot of kids that I've seen grown up uh, and things like that. But yeah, just, uh, just wanna recognize the, uh, extension office and all the work and coordination and communication that they've put into making this week hopefully go off without a hitch. Don't wanna jinx it.
Okay. Vice Chair Fidzikowski?
I ran into an issue with a citizen this weekend. Um, and basically involved a individual who was burning, um, what I would consider to be hazardous materials. Things like carpeting and linoleum and things of that nature. And, um, I told her I would try to look into it and I went into the county code and it wasn't very clear, but, um, the sheriff's office assisted me with it. And I think they've, they've put everything on the right track. But I was wondering if we can't make that a little bit clearer, that you can't burn certain substances in an open pit.
Yeah, and, and I think the state is really the, the one that regulates that the most. I think DEQ in particular, 'cause we, we had an instance down in your neck of the woods where, um, the citizen was burning, um, stuff that he shouldn't have been. And, um, our, um, our, um, emergency service people responded because of the, the fire that he was burning and, and they went ahead and got DEQ involved. DEQ ended up, um, issuing notices of violation and things of that nature, so.
Well, that's, that's actually, that was a pretty big fire though.
Yeah.
My understanding, but, uh.
But it was someone who was burning it himself, yeah.
Yeah, this would be small amounts. And, you know, when somebody doesn't light the match until after midnight, that kinda sends a signal that he knows that it, he shouldn't be doing it. But, uh, um, it's, uh, one of those things, you kinda gotta catch him in the act because the evidence is gone in the morning. And, uh, and I don't know, I, i- if that is a DEQ thing, that may be something I need to talk to, uh, Mr. Geary about, about how to, wh- wh- where should I send a citizen if they have an issue like that?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea and I'll talk with them as well, so.
Yeah, okay. Uh, that's all I got.
Okey-dokey. Um, let's see. I was only gonna say that, uh, if you look at your latest VACO newsletter, you see the Montgomery County Courthouses in there and a little bit of history about the courthouses. So, I thought that was, that was unique. And then Ms. Hill and I attended the tourism, uh, meeting today and there, they were having a presentation sort of on their strategic plan. So, um, that's what happened earlier today. So, anything else for the cause? All right, we're adjourned until July eighth.